Hi, ladies and gentlemen. If you could please sign in for us at the front.
Good evening. If I could get everybody's attention, please. My name is Lauren Shackleford. I'm the current chair for the Washington County Planning Board and Zoning Board of Adjustments. Did want to make an announcement before we start our meeting tonight. As you can see, we have five planning board members here. We have two that are absent per our ordinances. It takes six affirmative votes for any variances. Since we do not have a quorum, we will not have a Washington County ZBA, Zoning Board of Adjustments, meeting tonight. The following items will be tabled until our next meeting. Lot 5A Magnolia Acres variance, Gilmer variance, Harmon Estates Trail subdivision, Lot 21 variance. Those items will not be heard tonight. Likewise, the adjoining items for those on the Planning Commission schedule, the replat Lot 5A Magnolia Acres subdivision Phase 1 will be tabled, as well Gilmer replat Lot 13 Summers Original subdivision. So if you're here to speak to those items tonight, we will not hear those items due to lack of quorum. We will not take public comment on those. Okay? All right. So we will not have our zoning board of adjustments meeting. We will move to the Planning Commission meeting. We'll start with roll call, please.
Absolutely. Anthony McNutt.
Here.
Jay Piercy.
Here.
Joe Maynard.
Here.
Lauren Shackleford.
Here.
Robert Daughtry is out of town. Chantel Poirier.
Here.
And the new appointee for the Planning Board and Zoning Board of Adjustment is Marla Pearson. She could not be today. Today she's out of town, but she's going to be here like on the June 5th, hopefully.
Okay. So we do have five. We do have a quorum, so I will call the meeting to order based on that roll call. First item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from our previous meeting, which is March 27, 2025. Those were distributed early. Any questions, revisions, or actions on the minutes from our previous meeting?
That's minutes. Adjourn.
Make a motion to approve.
Got a motion?
Piercing.
And a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we'll move on. The approval of the agenda for tonight's meeting. We have conditional use permit, Genesis RV Park CUP in the county, Fable Planning, Mission Boulevard, Secure Storage CUP, land development hearings in the county, Eugene Sniman Minor Subdivision, sorry if I messed that name up, Sonora Meadows Preliminary Subdivision, Hammond Minor Subdivision, Bill's Fence Company Preliminary Large-Scale Development. Is there any changes to the agenda statement?
No, sir.
If not, I'll entertain a motion for approval of the agenda.
Motion to approve.
Got a motion?
Second.
And a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we'll start with the first item on the agenda, which is the Genesis RV Park Conditional Use Permit. We'll start with staff report, please.
Absolutely. Genesis RV Park CUP. This is the vicinity map. This is like the site map. And this is the neighbor notification map. So the applicant is seeking a conditional use permit approval to allow the operation and development of an RV park that propose to be constructed in three phases with about 15 pad sites per phase, to ultimately reach a maximum of 40 to 41 RV pad site completed with water sanitation, septic system, electric, and all other services and a detention pond. The applicant intends to utilize the existing single-family residence located on the site to be used as an office for the onsite full-time employee. Office hours is proposed to be from 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., with RV pads enter and exiting limited from 6:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. The conditional use permit is submitted for phase development construction. If approved, the project will be required to proceed through a full large-scale development approval process. So the property is located on Natural Walk Road, which is Washington County Road 502, about three-quarter miles from Beaver Lake. It's a greatly wooded area, and all three sides, other than the road, is just like covered. A new driveway and a drive aisles will be constructed through the middle of the site with access from Natural Walk Road. Roads and pad sites will be covered with six inches of compacted base with the first 50 feet from the right-of-way. So to date, we received 28 neighbor complaints and opposition to this CUP project citing reduction of property value, water service shortage, increased traffic, traffic safety, environmental concerns, general safety concerns, incompatibility with the surrounding natural areas, residential area, potential littering, trespassing, transients, and full-time campers. So we have many conditions. The ones in blue, the ones that they have to stick by, because like we discussed this during the technical review, and I believe the engineer on the project, who is the applicant, is available to answer any further questions.
Is the applicant or representative of the applicant here? If you would, please state your name and address for the record, sir.
Please enable.
Hit the little button in front of you.
Again.
Other side.
The running guy, yes.
Yeah.
IT, could you just give him access, please? It should be pushed to talk.
Nope, not yet. Okay, I got it.
You got it?
Yes, sir.
Jason Ingalls with Expedient Civil Engineering, 9200 Suitsus Drive, Bella Vista, Arkansas. I'll answer any questions you may have.
Have you seen the proposed conditions from staff on this?
We have.
Okay. Any issues with any of the proposed conditions?
No, sir.
Okay. Any questions of the applicant from board members?
I would like to know if you'd be amenable to reducing the stay length. That would be a more than applicants' question.
Yeah, I think, I mean, I had to speak with our client, but I think two weeks max would stay if things were looking at. We're not looking at like.
Now they all went off.
We're looking for users to come in there, want to frequent the lake. We're not looking for like a RV park that people have a permanent residence. I'm not sure. I think, Sam, you can reiterate.
We have the condition that says like.
Yeah, they went off again.
Number nine says 90 days.
Yes, 90 days max, but like they're not supposed to be more than 14 days prior to like renewing their stay. It's number 9B. Same for the active employee. He shouldn't like just park there and like and live in his RV if he's going to live in an RV.
So am I incorrect in assuming my reading here that if someone can stay for 90 days?
Up to 90 days maximum. Yeah, we can always limit this if you would love to.
Well, I don't know if that would be germane to some of objections. They don't want residents there.
That's correct. I would just like the official to come up and speak afterwards.
Yep.
Okay, we'll do that.
So the idea is like maximum of 90 days, like 14 days intermittent, so you can like leave after four days and come back, but as an RV itself, you cannot stay there for like maximum of 90 days. Yep.
Hey, will there be security provided at the RV park?
Yes, there'll be onsite work of this house at the house.
Would that be 24/7 hours?
I think that officer would like to.
Push to talk.
If I remember. Security, yes. Security was the question. Yeah.
We can, I mean, that's a, Jason Oger.
All right. Any other questions of the applicant? All right, seeing none, I'll open it up to public comment. I know there's a lot of people that want to speak to this item. We want to hear everybody. Please remember, as an individual, you have three minutes to speak. We encourage you to, obviously, we want to hear your opinion, but if it's been stated by others, we've got that. Try to share new additional information with us, but we'll open it up now. Anybody that wants to speak, please step forward, state your name and address for the record. Any public comment? Okay.
I don't know what I'm saying.
That's fine. If you would, please state your name and address for the record.
It's still not working. I objected to this because 20 years ago, we bought 75 acres out past where you got opposing part. And the reason why we got this land is because they would not allow the water. And then the building was set in house, still on our property. And if the water was waiting on, it's a federal, whatever you did. It might.
It's not on.
Turn it on.
But we can hear you.
We were, we were.
Turn it on. Turn it on, our stuff. Yeah. Did you do it?
How we put a park in that has 25 units for two weeks I stay, if there's no water, it's out there. I mean, that's just.
It's so close to the lake.
Yes, thank you.
The sewage bothers me going into the lake. I mean, I love my lake, and I love everything around the lake. I mean, that's why I'm out there, but I'm sorry, I'm just so nervous.
That's okay.
But thank you for your time.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Is there anybody else that would like to speak on this item?
I guess Sharon, Sharon Shelby. Hopefully we'll have to leave. Not.
Yes, I'm Ron Hendrick. Live right directly behind the, or at the end of the, where they're going to place this RV park in.
Maybe Ingram.
I have, don't have a sufficient water pressure presser on my property, and I know that's the way it is around the area. And this is going to cause a lot of chaos behind me and not knowing. They're going to try and get through my yard or whatever they're going to do. There's some roads back there, but whether they're going to try and get through there or not, so it's going to be quite empty. They put 41 units over there. Okay?
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Is there anybody else that would like to make public comment on this item? If you would, please come, state your name and address for the record.
My name is Amber Henderson. My address is 19785 Natural Walk Road. We are immediately in the middle of this RV park. I did.
Ms. Amber, you can pull this down if you want to.
I'm sorry. Thank you. Hi, doctor. Good evening, members of the council. My name is Amber Henderson. My husband, Thomas, three boys, and I live on the property that directly borders the site of the proposed 41-site RV park. We are here tonight to respectfully request that you vote no on this development due to documented concerns related to infrastructure, public safety, environmental impact, and land-use compatibility. First, road safety and infrastructure. The roads leading to the proposed site, specifically Natural Walk Road and surrounding routes, are narrow, steep, and not engineered for frequent use of heavy vehicles like RVs and trucks hauling boats. Directly across from the proposed site, there is a steep slope adjacent to a hauler where we've already had a fatality. These roads lack shoulders and have limited visibility even after repeated requests to address road damage, including potholes that have bent rims and popped tires. Only limited repairs have been made. This week, we actually had three of those filled, so I am appreciative of that. The increase in large-vehicle traffic from this development will accelerate deterioration and increase accident risk. This also directly affects child safety. Springdale Public Schools no longer provide door-to-door bus drop-offs in our area. Children must now walk to designated drop-off points in Nob Hill, often along these same narrow roads. The addition of RV traffic on these routes create a new and serious hazard for children walking home from school each day. Second, public safety and emergency response limitations. Our property is located over 30 minutes from the Washington County Sheriff's Office. In one case, when I personally was held at knife point from a drunk man, it took two hours for deputies to respond. The introduction of up to 41 RVs with frequent turnover and limited accountability creates a transient population in our area already challenged by delayed law enforcement response. This is a public safety concern, not only for us, but for the broader community. Third, environmental and land use impact. We legally and responsibly use our land for sustenance during hunting season. An influx of visitors will disturb wildlife habitats, threaten conservation balance, and interfere with our ability to use land as intended. The terrain in this area includes steep haulers, sensitive slopes, and hidden rock beds, hazardous for people unfamiliar with the area. Runoff from concentrated vehicle presence can contribute to erosion. We already have serious erosion problems in our area. The impact to water quality downstream, all of us have streams that were literally by Beaver Lake. Fourth, repeated issues with unauthorized entry. Since the opening of a private rehab facility in a nearby cove, literally down below our home, we have had multiple incidents of individuals crossing onto our land despite no trespassing signs. This presents liability and safety concerns, particularly with rugged terrain. Based on this precedent, we have every reason to believe a high-turnover RV park will lead to increased instances of trespassers placing themselves at risk and violating private property boundaries. Finally, we ask you to consider the impact of the community's peace and livability. A project of this size will generate significant audible and light pollution, particularly at night. This is a quiet rural community, and the expected increase in traffic, outdoor activity, and illumination from dozens of RVs will disrupt the tranquility that residents value. We urge you to consider these well-documented risks. The roads are not built for this. The emergency services are too far away. Our children will be less safe walking home, and I know for a fact there's four that walk home from elementary to middle school right across their property. That's it.
Okay. I appreciate your input. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to address this item? Hi.
He's part of, part of your.
Okay. If you would, please state your name and address for the record, sir.
My name, Randy Lee Deason. I own 19831 Natural Walk Road. There's several problems that need to be addressed, which I think you probably heard most of them already. The traffic, first of all, it's hard enough for just two trucks to pass each other. With RVs coming in and coming out, they're going to have to pull off on somebody's property to go there, and there's no, hadn't been no progress in planning on how to do that. Also, the septic systems, I don't see how they're going to put so many septic systems in one acre. You know, I've got 9.43 acres, I believe. I've got one septic system, and it's hard for me to keep track of it, to be honest with you. Like I said, also, they're going to be a problem, probably because my property is right where they're going to build at it. And you know as good as I do, there's going to be people throwing trash over on my property when their dumpsters get full. That won't say nothing about how many dumpsters they're going to have or anything like that.
Ladies and gentlemen, just make sure like you sign in. I've seen many. Sign in, please. Everyone needs to sign in. It helps us like when we write the reports. Thank you.
The RVs are too big.
I mean, also, as the other lady said, it's hard enough for just the bus go through there when you get RVs.
They're bigger than buses.
Yeah, and they're going to be a whole lot bigger.
Okay. I appreciate it. Thank you very much. Just make sure everybody clarification. We're hearing the conditional use permit only tonight. We're not looking at the large-scale development, so a lot of the specifics of the project would be addressed in a later meeting with large-scale development. What we're doing today is talking about the conditional use permit to allow this business to go on this property. The specifics of how it's designed and that sort of thing would be addressed during the large-scale development.
Okay.
All right? Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Appreciate it.
Wonderful evening.
Thank you, Mr. Deason. All right, is there anybody else here that would like to address this item? Thank you.
My name is Claudia Henderson, and I live at 19719 Natural Walk Road. And I also, my son lives on the property next door to me, 19785, and I'm like everybody else. The roads aren't made for this. The school, the children have to walk from a bus stop, and the dogs have bitten some of the children before in the past, and it's, the septic deal is not a good deal, and I'm just not happy about it all. I don't want the riffraff. I don't want the trash on my property. I don't want to have to pick it up, and I don't want to have to deal with people coming in and out. I know it's supposed to be like from 6 to 10 and odd hours of the day or night. Some of us have a life we do have to live and work, and I'm not a bit happier about it.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Henderson. Appreciate it. All right, is there anybody else that would like to address this item? Seeing none, I'll close public, oh, I do have one more. Okay, sorry. Thank you.
My name's Rick Hall. I live at 22487 East War Eagle Road and with my wife, and we drive past this location every day, and I agree with everybody that's spoken before. We urge you not to vote for this, and I also work for Central EMS, and I can tell you the emergency services, this is a far corner of the county, so our closest station is over 10 miles away. The response time minimum would be probably 20 minutes. If that ambulance from that station there is elsewhere, it could take even longer to respond, and the fire department at Nob Hill is volunteer, so that as well. You know, I don't know the response times they have, but it's just, I don't think the area would support something like this. We already have that, four RV parks that I know of just in, within a few miles of this, and, but they are off, right off 412, not back in the residential community, and while it is rural, there are homes all around there, and I can tell you there's blind curves on both sides of this entrance, so it, I think you're just asking for trouble, so.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. All right, anybody else want to speak on this item? Okay. Seeing none, I'll will close public comment, bring it back to the applicant.
The only thing I can add is, we will, from listening to neighbors discussion, it looks like, most RV parks, they do get fenced. We don't currently show that on our plan, but it sounds like that's what we need to do, is to fence the perimeter of this thing to keep neighbor trespass on others that are adjacent to it, which is somewhat typical with RV parks. Sometimes they'll fence them, whether that be chain link or wood fence around the perimeter. It is, if you look at the topography on this site, it is, the pads are going to be located on the, kind of a knob, so there's some ravines on both sides that with, that are heavily wooded, that help screen for the neighbors. I haven't personally been to the site, but looked at it from Google Earth, and it looks pretty wooded to me. As far as the traffic concerns, I own an RV, have a travel trailer, so I can speak from experience. Most of the time, when I come to an RV site, it's usually check-in times are after 4:00 p.m., and usually checkouts at 11:00 a.m. So those times, especially 11:00 a.m. for a checkout, kids are in school during that time period when those RVs are leaving. And they don't all 41 leave at once. We know that. Any state park that's visited, you might get three or four at a time they're leaving. And most RV parks typically, even though there's 41 spaces, during non-peak hours or peak seasons of the year, they may only be 80% full, maybe only 60% full. So we're not looking at 41 spaces 365 days a year being filled up. It's much like the hotel industry. You know, there's going to be some empty rooms, there's going to be some empty pads. Although the owner would like for it to be 100% full of the time, it just doesn't happen that way. As far as all the other items, fire and safety, a lot of these RV parks are in the rural areas. We don't like to try to put them next to subdivisions and inside the city limits. We like to put them some close, somewhere close to the lake, so the lake can be enjoyed. And that's the purpose of this development here, is for that recreational use, so. And I'll answer any questions that you may. And I'll answer any questions that you may further have.
Any questions of the applicant from board?
Water and septic, you know, those seem to be some valid things if we've already got water pressure problems. And I know it may be a little bit ahead of the gun for a conditional use, but still, I think that's valid to speak to.
It is, and Springdale Water Utilities has already made us aware of it. We have not communicated with them when they had any meetings. We wanted to get past this point first before we get into large scale to discuss that with them. They are the provider in the area, Springdale Water Utilities. Septic, we already have a septic designer already on board. We've already dug pits. The septic is suitable for this area. It's not going to be a septic for every pad. Typically with RV parks, you can put so many pads on one tank and two drain fields, so there'll be two or three drain fields within the development.
And that will be reviewed and approved by the State Health Department like any other state.
Yes, Washington County Health Department will review and approve that.
Yeah, Springdale Water already provided some of the conditions and like it's on the step reports.
Okay. Okay, yeah, I tend to agree with Mr. McNutt. I mean, obviously, that's more large-scale development, but that's obviously a lot of concerns here, and we need to be thinking about that because obviously, those will specifically be addressed if this is approved when we get to that step.
Yeah, our septic designer has already given us a layout, showing us where the primary is and the alternate fields, because as you know, not only do you have to do a primary field, if that fails, you've got to have an area equal to that size to accept it. And we've laid all that out. We originally were looking at 60 spaces. That's why it's decreased to 40 is because of the septic analysis that was done.
Okay.
That's all we could get on.
Yeah, and one more clarification. So, they're going to do the large scale of dispasses, and since it's like three phases, they'd have to apply for preliminary, like for phase one, and then prelim for phase two, prelim for phase three, and then when everything is done, they will apply for a final for the three phases, so just like the public would know.
Okay. All right, any other questions of the applicant from board? Okay, appreciate it, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
I did have one question. What is the, is that a paved road?
So, coming into, now, we're going to use gravel, so I did see someone say additional runoff. We will have detention pond that'll get approved with the large scale, but this will be a gravel drive. It'll be pavement. We have to concrete so many feet, as Sam could tell you, away from the county road, but then all that's going to be gravel, so it's kind of a pervious surface. It's not going to produce as much.
Well, I was asking more about the county road servicing this location. The county road, is that a paved road?
I believe natural way walk is a paved road.
I believe so, yeah.
And obviously, part of the large scale, obviously, the county road department would be involved in that process.
Yeah, and every gravel within it should be compacted to 75,000 pounds to hold like trucks, fire trucks. And I know that people says like it's not impervious, but once you compact it that hard, it becomes.
Yeah.
It does compact pretty good. That's why we'll be doing a detention pond to hold back that increase in runoff.
Okay. All right, any other questions of the applicant from board? Okay, thank you, sir. I'll bring it back to the board for action.
Okay. To me, it seems like that there's a lot of other steps and hurdles that have to be gone through even if we just sign off on this conditional use permit. This isn't saying that the project is approved by any means. It's just saying that we're approving the property to be used for something other than it's zoned for right now. Is that correct?
Technically, there's no zoning in Washington County.
Right.
Yeah, the ask is to approve a conditional use to allow the development of a, on this property. All the other issues will be addressed through the preliminary large-scale development and large-scale development process.
Yeah. If that's, if that's the case, I'm okay with approving it to get on to the other steps to see, to see if it's suitable for that area from there on for large scale. So, I'd make a motion to approve.
We have a motion for approvals or second?
Oh, second.
We got a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye. No.
Any opposed?
I oppose.
Okay. We have one opposition. So, it passes?
Yeah, it's four, yeah, five to one, it does.
All right. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Okay, let's move on. The next item is in the Fayetteville Planning Area. This is Mission Boulevard Secure Storage Conditional Use Permit. Sam, we'll start with a staff report, please.
Just a second. Yeah, all the cheerleading outside is like for this project, just like be patient with us. Ladies and gentlemen, just like please like go ahead, like and sign in so we can use the names during the minutes. It helps us a lot. This is the Mission Boulevard Secure Space Condition Use Permit. This is like the vicinity map. This is the site map, and this is the neighbor notification map. I want to just clarify because like most of the comments we receive, it referenced the City of Fayetteville Condition Use Permit like code and conditions. So, I want to clarify that the City of Fayetteville, it's in green. Everything else in the county in Fayetteville Planning Area, but it's still county property, just like for clarification. So, the applicant is requesting a conditional use permit to construct and operate like multiple mini storage unit facilities located in the City of Fayetteville Planning Area and north of east Mission Boulevard, Arkansas Highway 45. Currently, the subject properties are like under contract. The contract information is attached to this presentation and was attached in the staff report. The final approval and ratification of the CUP project is contingent upon the finalizing of the sale and the property ownership transfer. The proposed facility will have one full-time employee and contains a total of 15 buildings, utilizing four parcels, 8.3 acres in total with detention pond, sidewalks, parking spaces. One of them is being ADA compliant. Proposed hours of operation is Monday through Friday from 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM, and Saturdays from 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM. They're closed on Sunday. I don't want to go through like all the specifics, but that's, the total building footprint is approximately 2.96 acres out of the 3.8. And they're going to have, like, they're trying to build this like in two phases and with a potential of a third phase if it's feasible. So, they're going to have seven buildings for phase one and eight buildings for phase two. And an office building is going to be in type A building up front, close to the parking and close to the highway. The proposed project will be constructed in two phases with a potential of a third, as I said. The applicant will seek a large-scale development if the CUP is approved. To date, staff has received 63 complaint in opposition to the project, to this project. In addition, several neighbors of the adjoining subdivisions have raised concern and voiced their opposition to the CUP project citing increased traffic flow and vehicular like backup and compatibility with the surrounding residential subdivisions. Development would deter, detract from the natural beauty and will have negative aesthetic impact, potential crime risk, you know, it's like this type of like project, they propose project might attract break-ins, theft, illegal activities, and loitering. Concerns about like drainage issues, Torn Motor Creek runoff, and the destruction of wildlife habitat, light, lighting and noise pollution, and an, which is going to be inappropriate for like peaceful like nature, like living and the nature like in the area. The project would negatively affect surrounding property like value, and this, and this sets precedence for future businesses uses in the area. I tried to be as colorful as possible. So, this is like a summary of the subdivision slash ponds area. So, as you see, the proposed storage is in red. All the other colors are subdivisions, and the blues are ponds. You can see there is a pond here, there is a pond down here, highway, and subdivisions like in the area. And this is a Google like screenshot showing like multiple like storage units on the stretch of Arkansas 45, and there's one north of here. The CUP already is being FOIA'd the first like time we had, we had like the neighbor notification being sent, and they had to fly it against the project. I just like went in for like transparency and clarification. These are like the names of the neighbors that like they objected to the project, and they voiced their concern, and they're strongly opposing that. The planning conditions are here, and we have also like lots of like feedback we, from the utilities and the being like forward to the applicant if you have any questions.
Questions of staff from board members?
Got a question. The legislature just passed something that negated the city, city operating in the county.
Yes, their territorial jurisdiction, which is like growth area, planning area, that's what people call it, it's going, like it's being voted out. The legislative session ended April 16th, and this should take effect after the, after 90 days, so it would be about like mid-July. Regardless, this is a condition use permit, planning area or not, it's still a county property, it has to go through the CUP in large scale regardless, so. Fayetteville has, Fayetteville like they provided their like feedback, and they provided some suggestions and recommendations, but yeah, they have like no say in like the, on the process of like zoning.
Okay, any other questions of staff from board members? Okay, is the applicant or the applicant's representative here? If you would, please state your name and address for the record, sir.
George DuKane with Blune Associates, and I have Henry Jordan. He is the developer in question on this project. So, if you guys have any, oh, 3825 North Shattles Drive, Fayetteville, Arkansas. So, if you guys have any questions for us, I guess we're here. Do you guys want us to do a little presentation?
Let me see if any of the board members want to ask any preliminary questions. Otherwise, we'll have you come back after we take any comments from board at this time. Okay, we'll open it up for public comment. Again, I would reiterate, there's a lot of folks here that want to speak to this. I want to hear everybody. You have three minutes to speak as an individual, 10 minutes if you're a hired professional representing a group. If we've, we've heard it, you don't need to repeat it, but if you feel passionate, you know, obviously, you've got your time to do what you want to do. Again, we are reviewing only the conditional use permit tonight. All the specifics of the project would be designed and approved through a large-scale development process, so I would ask comments to remain online with the conditional use permit for the property and not the actual operations of the, of the proposed development at this time. If you would, please state your name and address for the record.
Certainly. Good evening. My name's Suzanne Clark. I'm an attorney here in Fayetteville, and I am here representing Thomas and Dobrina Johnick who live at 3863 East Chatsworth Road. They are, they are in the Covington Park subdivision, and their property, the fence of their property literally backs up right to the property line of this subject property. My comments tonight are very much focused on the factors that you should be considering with regard to allowing a conditional use, and we don't believe this fits. And largely, the compatibility issue is a, is a, it's probably one of the most significant here. This is a residential subdivision. It's a, it's a very nice area within Fayetteville. The growth that is expanding out beyond it should be allowed to continue to grow. And with regard to compatibility, this is, this is a massive project with 15 buildings in phases one and two, I understand, with an option for a third, and over 128,000 square feet of commercial space. And I don't believe that adding some trees and some indirect lighting can somehow convert 128,000 square feet of commercial space to residentially compatible. And, and these are residential developments. These folks bought, especially my clients, bought this property with the idea that they are in a residential development. And so, I don't believe it's compatible. I also think in terms of the future growth, it negatively impacts that. We, we all know what's going on with Northwest Arkansas with regard to the housing shortages. And putting this sort of a use literally right next to these subdivisions is going to diminish the opportunities for developers who frankly could see this property as ripe for further residential, residential growth. With regard to some of the, the opportunities for crime and that sort of thing, for my clients in particular, they are at the far end of this property. They're talking about having one employee. So, from the standpoint of security and options, they've got kids, they don't need to be in an area frankly with a commercial opportunity that may invite loitering and some, some forms of crime. Obviously, for my clients, the diminishment in property values, which is another one of the factors to consider, is, is on the table as well. And, and putting this kind of a facility literally next door to them, there's no question that's going to have a diminishment of property values on their property, and I expect some of the other surrounding properties. So, with regard to the factors that are considered, I think in the, in chapter 13 of the code, it's, it's, the categories of four, five, six, and seven are the factors that I would argue don't fit for this project in terms of passing it for a conditional use. And on behalf of my clients, I would respectfully ask that you deny the conditional use application.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate it. All right, anybody else like to speak to this?
My name is Grace Johnson. I'm an attorney here in Fayetteville, and I am representing the McClintons who reside at 3866 East Chatworth, Chatsworth Road in Fayetteville with, they're also backed up to this property, and they also own 7.5 acres at 2561 Oakland Zion Road. The McClintons share the many comments and concerns that you guys presumably have seen in the report. And again, we agree with the compatibility, and I think that one of the big issues is if you drive down Mission Road, the entry of Covington is a quarter mile from the entry of this, of this development. However, it goes back eight acres and literally butts up to these neighbors, to single home properties. And it also butts up to my client's 7.5 acres that is kind of cut a corner to it. And they're concerned about the screening and the night lighting that's not going to be enough to decrease, to affect the decrease in the property values with the invasive lights and sounds and visually taking away from the character of the neighborhood. And it doesn't add to the neighborhood. There is a large storage unit facility just a quarter mile down the road. So, there's not a shortage or an unmet need for storage facilities. It's not like a local grocery store or a coffee shop that would be an added convenience to these neighbors. Slide 37 of Sam's presentation shows how close the nearest storage facility is to this proposed project, and it's in an area where there are other commercial properties, which is more appropriate for that type of project. My clients are also very worried about water runoff. The staff report notes Fayetteville has a moratorium on new water taps in that area right now, and there are parts of that land that are dry. But there is also a portion of that project that sits on very wetland, which is running up against these, these properties and my client's other property. There's a creek that runs along the edge of the property between the neighborhood and this property, and the creek is very wet. And when it rains like it has this week, it rushes and erodes their property, and they have invested a lot, my clients and I believe the other neighbors have invested a lot of money to stabilize the creek so that it doesn't erode their property and so they can use their backyard. My client's back acres were very marshy and soft, and they have also have invested heavily in clearing out and stabilizing that natural pond so that they could use their land, and they now have a pond that has a berm, and it's stocked with fish, and there's kids swim in it, and they can use that property. That's also shown on slide 37 where it's, it's a pretty big pond. It covers the whole width of the property. They tested their land, and it failed the perk test, and they were told the land was on, really had a really high water table and was not suitable to build on. This is the property that butts up to this new project property. They also heard a similar flooding and septic trouble related to the proposed project property. And so, there's a great concern that such a large project will affect the water table, the surrounding lands that are already struggling and, and trying to manage the water runoff, not only during the construction, but also with the finished project with such a large area of impervious surface. There are also concerns about pollutant runoff affecting these waterways from vehicles parked at the storage facility, including chemicals, oil, and gas, all those things that come with parked vehicles. You can see on slide 37, there are multiple ponds currently in the area to manage the water runoff, and this indicates this issue's not just isolated to my client's property.
Ma'am, again, storm runoff, all of that would be addressed at large-scale development. What's on our table tonight is a conditional use permit on compatibility only, okay?
I, I appreciate that, but I think that this is still part of it, whether this is going to, if it's not possible, it's not possible to make it work.
Large-scale development would require stormwater runoff, retention, all the things that you're addressing. That's, that's not before this board tonight.
Okay. Well, I appreciate you listening.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, I appreciate it. All right, who else would like to speak to this? Hi. Yeah, put, turn it, push it back on. We gotta wait till we get a red light. Okay, thanks. Yes, sir.
My name's Jim Norris, I live at 4008 Mission Boulevard, right next to the proposed rezoning area. I'm strongly opposed to this rezoning for all the reasons stated. It's gonna have a definite negative impact on livability. This is, all those homes around that area, this is, this is a quiet residential area. It's gonna have a huge impact on livability, property values and all the other concepts stated. None of our, none of my neighbors think this is a good idea. As a matter of fact, if you're one of my neighbors and you think this is a bad idea, please raise your hand. Yeah, this is, this is putting a commercial property in the middle of a residential area, and that's not compatible. That's, that's the, that's the basic concept of zoning. And I hope you keep that in mind, thank you.
Thank you, sir, appreciate it. All right, anybody else like to address this?
Tim Riley, 2516 North Kittery Lane. I'll be brief. I'm a resident of the Covington Park neighborhood, whose home is very close to this property under discussion. I strongly oppose the development of this property. Well, not the property in general, but this particular project. The project under consideration would generate significant negative externalities for the surrounding properties, externalities which cannot be reasonably mitigated. More importantly, the project would generate a substantial negative spillover effect. It will discourage future housing construction in all of Washington County. The project will signal to buyers of homes and potential future housing developments that the development's quality is at a significant risk of future deterioration. That risk will lower the values of homes in the potential development, which would encourage developers who are even beginning to build housing projects. I urge you to carefully consider this long-run cost to Washington County. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, appreciate it. All right, if we would, please keep civil, not, we need to keep it professional, so if we could not applaud yay, boo, that sort of thing, I'd appreciate it, so. All right, I'm sorry, sir, I didn't mean to distract. If you would, please state your name and address for the record.
I'm Silas, I'm in Katanzer, really white, height. What I'm here to bring up is not even mentioned yet. Can you go to Google Earth one, it's slightly wider? If you look. It's slightly wider. Who, who the subdivision, there is two schools, Vandergriff Elementary and McNair Middle School. If you combine those two numbers of students, that's 1,200, 1,300 students. That's a pretty big portion of the whole school system, which this construction is gonna disrupt those students massively. Plus, in the neighborhoods, the sleep deprivation and potential insomnia. Turns out, that's not the best for learning environment, which I say is not a good thing. Are you with me?
Yes, sir, thank you, appreciate it very much. All right, who else would like to address this?
Good evening, commissioners. I'm Anita Schnee, I'm an attorney in practice in Fayetteville. And I also live on the, what's designated as the driver subdivision. A little unclear about why that is. It's the big yellow property immediately west of the proposed development. And I'm here to oppose the development for the following reasons. First, the ordinance application procedure was not followed. So it's a procedural objection. The substance of it is the storage facility is not aligned with the agricultural residential current zoning, as you've heard from other speakers. The adverse impact is particularly of concern to the residents and owners of the yellow driver subdivision property. And as others have said, the property value diminishment is also a great concern. The procedural issue arises because the county code, now not the Fayetteville City Code, the county code, and I cited the code in my objection letter, requires advance notice to neighboring landowners know, within 14 days of this meeting. And at least, to my understanding, three of the surrounding area property owners did not receive clear or timely notice. And one example is that Joshua Turner Brown was so confused about the notice that he did receive, that he actually came to the office in person to clarify. And that was nine days before this meeting, not 14. And sounds like a technical issue, but it impacts the landowners' due process rights, which I'm sure you're very sensitive to, we are anyway. Now, the noise, the lights, the constant traffic likely will diminish the property values, as you've heard, and certainly will affect the peaceful enjoyment of the neighboring property. And I want to speak specifically to the concern that of such, that a facility like this is going to need heavy floodlighting 24/7, regardless of the areas, of the hours of operation. And this is of particular concern to migratory birds. The yellow property is host to at least 19 species of overwintering birds and is a very important stopover for shorebird migration during the spring and the fall. The 24/7 lighting disorients the birds, it draws them down from their, their passage, confuses them, disrupts nesting sites. And particularly unfortunate for this particular locale is that the brown property, the, the, the yellow property is a significant outpost between the corridor that stretches from the country in Madison County through the brown property to Botanical Gardens of the Ozarks and Lake Fayetteville. It's a crucial corridor for migratory birds, and this will really disrupt that.
Ma'am, again, lighting would be something that would be addressed through the large-scale development, preliminary and final approval of the large-scale development. What we're addressing tonight is the conditional use permit for this type of project in this location.
Understood. So the, the, you've now heard the local opposition here is reasonable, it's fact-based, and it's valid. And Arkansas case law requires that you really hear the legitimate community concerns and afford them the appropriate weight in the exercise of your discretion. So in sum, the application suffers from procedural flaws, is incompatible with the surrounding area, and is environmentally and economically harmful. And I respectfully urge you to deny the conditional use permit 119, and I thank you for your time and your consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Schnee, appreciate it. All right, anybody else want to address this item? Okay, seeing none, I'll close it to public comment. Oh, I'm sorry, I apologize, I did that last item too, I apologize. If you would, please state your name and address for the record.
Ryan Lovren, I'm at 3880 East Township Street. Tonight, you've heard from every corner of this proposed area. You've heard from Anita in the Josh Brown area, you've heard from Jim on the east side, you've heard from quite a few folks in the Covington Park side. I live on the Covington Park side. This, this proposed unit would be about 40 feet, literally, from my house. And little backstory, I wasn't born here, right? I didn't, I didn't come into college here. My wife and I lived in the River Valley. We, we sought out Fayetteville, okay? We saw what they had to offer back in 2017. We said, this is where we want to live. And I think there are a lot of people who are like that. We drove around neighborhoods, we spent plenty of time, we found Covington Park. One lot left that was not built on. We saw the lot, we saw the beauty behind it, which is the land that we're talking about, and the surrounding neighbors, and we bought that lot, and we built our home. Our home-home, our home that we're gonna raise our two boys in. One is now about to graduate, and the other one's still in high school. Point is, is this is our home, and we picked this area for its beauty, for the quietness. Literally knowing we're on the county line, having in the city, but having a backyard that's basically the county, fantastic place to be. So adamantly opposed to this conditional use permit. We are all neighbors here, you guys, everybody in this room, we all live here, we're on the same team. What I'm asking you as voters, based on everything you've heard, and even my personal testimony, is that you have a little bit of empathy. There's the, there's a, there's a leadership golden rule, we always like to say, is you wouldn't ask somebody else to do what you wouldn't do. I don't think anybody here, or here, would want to live next to a storage unit, period. You guys have that power tonight to do the right thing, take the high road, as if you were living in my shoes, and vote no. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, appreciate it. Okay, anybody else?
Hi, my name is Victoria Katanzeredi. I live at 2433 North Abbott Lane. Which I would like to add is a historic name, some of the families have, are new. Some of the families have, lived there for generations, have generations living on the property that I am on. It's an extremely special place. I don't know if a picture really has been painted of the different neighborhoods, the different socioeconomic situations going on, and yet it is completely copacetic. We are not on the radar for the police department, the Washington County. We are not on the radar for Fayetteville PD. We don't have a lot of problems out there. We have children walking in all the neighborhoods, between the neighborhoods. There's an initiative from the Fayetteville Public Schools for, to have more walkability. And they want, you know, Mission is a quarter, we have a 12-foot sidewalk that butts right up to where we are. This is a child-safe area. And I am not seen in these plans where this property is going to be polisable. Who is going to be able to check the perimeter of this property? If you're coming to thieve there, we know that these kind of properties, they usually have 10-foot tall barbed wire, you know, barbed wire topped fences, and the lighting is, you know, an issue because they draw crime potentially for the value that they hold. How is this going to be policed? How is this going to be accessed? Is it going to have to come through these people's properties at the back of township? Are we going to have increased policing county presence, presence every time their alarms go off? I just wanted to paint that picture. The only other thing I have to say is, flying a dead horse here, the water issue. Why is this the last developed piece of property? Because it is below all of the other pieces of property. I, my concern is that these developers, you know, potential developers who are getting duped, our whole area is getting bought up, why was this bought up last? It is going to be below water. We are above this, I don't know, altitude-wise, probably a good 17 feet where I'm at. Weeks after it rained, the water table is a foot below. I'm a gardener, I dig, that is what I do at work for home for fun. I have had access to this property gardening for, since 2008. The water line where we, a hill, that's why they put the big aquifers on top of the hills, on a hill comes up, you know, we have a foot of space before we hit water. We actually, I, I know that's a, a planning issue also. I just, I guess that's it, it's a really bad idea, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am, I appreciate it. Okay, anybody else?
Hi, I am Nicole Aldridge, I live at 3889 East Chatsworth. I live next door to the Jan Dick family. My property would be exactly in the backyard, probably maybe 30 feet from the buildings that were proposed. And I've already written you, so I will only take one minute to say what I want to say, but, and my remarks are the same. But every once in a while, I'm sure we find that we're in a place we didn't expect it. I'm sure you didn't come here to make, you know, moral judgments. But like many of these other people who moved to Covington Park, I moved there because of the promise of the beauty and the community, I loved it. My backyard was more than just, you know, a patch of land. It's the reason we picked out that home. And my husband was diagnosed four years ago with early onset Lewy body dementia. He was 54, he's 58 now. And he doesn't work or drive, but now the backyard is his only place. That is his refuge, and he has become an avid bird watcher. And I was so glad someone mentioned the birds, because I brought for you copies of over a dozen of the birds that he's documented that are on the Federal Bird Treaty Act. And all of these, we have pictures of, and we have recordings of as well. And they live in that property, and it is my husband's life, he enjoys it so much. So this project would take that from him, the noise, the lighting, the runoff, the view of the storage, instead of the trees, and it would change everything, not just for us, but the entire neighborhood. And property values would suffer, and the character of Covington Park would be diminished. This lot, like I said, is home to not only all these birds, but the red-shouldered hawk, which is federally protected, and the great horned owl, and migratory geese. And I want to protect my husband's love for that and for the birds, and give him the last few years of his life in peace. And I know, like I said before, that you didn't sign up for this. You signed to review permits and plans, not decide whose, whose project gets reviewed and whose peace gets protected. But every once in a while, you are asked away something, something deeper. And I, do we prioritize people, nature, or the community? Or do we say yes to pavement and profit? Your vote tonight is more than procedural, it signals what kind of community we are and who are willing to protect, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am, appreciate it.
Hi, my name is Erica Esterbrook. I'm at 3820 East Chatsworth Road in the Covington Park subdivision. I'm also a member of the Board of the Covington Park subdivision, I'm the treasurer, and I'm also an attorney. I'm not gonna belabor a lot of the points here, but I wanted to say that the Board has received many, many dozens of complaints from the 175 residents of the Covington Park subdivision over the past week or so. There's been a lot of concern about this conditional use permit, about the diminution in property values, about having commercial property immediately adjacent to established residential neighborhoods, which isn't sustainable, and that there's no particular need for this use, as there are other storage units relatively close by, and that Covington Park is a neighborhood within walking distance of two different schools. We chose this neighborhood so that our children could walk to schools and be safe and be surrounded by nature and things like that. And a lot of the neighbors in our neighborhood have expressed concern about public safety and particularly safety of our children. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am, appreciate it.
Henry Walker, 4020 East Mission Boulevard, Fayetteville. I do have to ask a question, though. The procedure of a CPU, you keep referring it or deferring it to large-scale development, LSD, correct?
Yes, sir, conditional use permit would be approved before a large-scale development was applied for.
Would any of the discussed eight acres be modified, utilized, or changed in any method during the period of CPU or before an LSD is completed?
That would be a question for staff.
Whatever is approved for the conditional use permit. So the CUP basically is a request to use this property for commercial use, anything other than agricultural use or residential. The plans that they submitted, the applicant submitted, says they're gonna be using 2.96 acres out of the 3.8. So that's gonna stay. Once they apply for the large scale, that is exactly what they're gonna be using, they cannot adjust. The only adjustment might happen if they're gonna shrink the amount of like, storage units or expand the detention pond based on the runoff, once they do the drainage report. And the engineer is here, he can answer this like way much better than me.
In essence, then, the CPU in facts turns the compatibility issue on its ear, and they're and therefore, by fiat, creates a commercial property out of this property. By fiat, by approval of the CPU. Is that not correct?
If the conditional use permit is approved, then that use on this property would be, just that specific use would be allowed. Yes, sir.
So that's a change from agri-residential by fiat?
Yes, that's the definition of this process. Yes, sir.
That is exactly what it is. Not mentioned or even hinted at in this, even for the CPU. Dishonest, I believe.
What do you mean it's not mentioned? Like, just to clarify? What do you mean it's not mentioned?
I'm not understanding your question.
There is no zoning in Washington County. So anything, a use by right is residential agriculture. Anything other than that requires a conditional use permit. That's the process we're going through tonight, is the conditional use permit for this site.
Can we name the horse a horse? Please? Because it makes the issue more pertinent, although it's pertinent enough at the moment. Secondly, the traffic on the highway, Highway forty-five. My wife worked for two years to get that traffic limit slowed down that last two miles to forty-five miles an hour and get deer signs set up because of the number of rear-end accidents right in front of our driveway. The driveway proposed through this will create a multiple group of side-impacted vehicular accidents, I can guarantee you, because of the way the roads laid out and because of the slope of the road and the attention of drivers. Safety issue paramount. I, I think that's about the base of the issue that I have.
Okay, thank you, sir. Appreciate it. All right, anybody else like to address the board on this item?
Hi.
Hi.
My name is Jill Gentry. I'm at thirty-eight ninety Chatsworth. So I agree with everything being stated so far, but wanted to add one last point. We're talking about diminishing property values. Well, that hurts us the homeowner, but what does that mean for the county? So if we have less value to our property, that's less revenue to the county, that that supports those two schools and the roads that's all being impacted by this matter. So just think about the money side of it, too, and how it affects the county as well as the private citizens.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Appreciate it.
All righty, so what, push the button?
Yeah, it's good to go. If you would state your name and address for the record.
Okay. All righty, my name is Josh Brown. I live at twenty-three ninety-one Abbott Lane. I've lived there about all my life. My address has changed four times since I've been there, but I've lived in the same house. Okay. So what it really boils down to, you go out there right now, today, you'll find a pretty pleasant, pleasing neighborhood. And it, yeah, yeah, it's a pretty good place to live. Okay, but it's agriculture-residential now. Start changing it, and I know there's a technical saying, it's only, it's not really changing it, but it is changing what happens. It's the first nail in the coffin, and there are gonna be some more. So the next, the other thing, you guys go out there. Look at that land that the many storages proposed on, and you might conclude, this is not very suitable for that extensive of a development. Basically, it's a retention pond for the whole area right now. It's very, very low. Anyway, that. And then my acquaintance over here, Hugh, yeah, there he is. Okay, so he calls me. I've gotten acquainted with him by phone because he's a persistent fellow. He's been calling me for a good long while saying, "Hey, sell me your land." And I tell him, "My mom gave it to me, and I'm gonna give it to my kids." And he said, "Well, can I keep checking with you?" And I said, "Sure. Call me anytime." Okay. The last time I talked to him, he said, "Why don't you just sell me your land and move out to the country?" And, but I think I'll make my last stand right here. My great-granddaddy was a Confederate soldier, and he made a last stand. And he lost, but anyway. And I might lose, too, but I'm gonna go down fighting. Okay, much obliged for your time in trouble.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Appreciate that. All right, anybody else?
My name is Martha Pilgrim. I live at twenty-three ninety-one North Abbott Lane. And I would ask you, why would you even consider such a thing when you have a roomful of people who are residents of Fayetteville, Arkansas, contributing to the economy, making it a beautiful place? We don't need any more storage units. You know all the reasons. Please make the right decision. It's up to you, right?
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate it. Mr. Brown, we normally don't go back to respeak, but I'll give you a minute. Go quickly, please.
All righty. When I was a kid, here's how planning and zoning worked. Mrs. Carson, one mile down the road, her husband had passed away, and she was looking for something to make ends meet. So she came up with the idea of opening a little grocery store. And that was a long time ago, because you look at me and know when I was a kid, it was a long time ago. But nonetheless. So she went around to all the neighbors and said, "Is it okay with y'all if I open a little grocery store?" And all of them, yeah, it was there a long time. And my parents got me credit down there, and I'd walk down and, you know, get treats. Okay.
I appreciate it. Thank you, sir.
Okay, I promise I'm true.
Okay, thank you, sir. I appreciate it. All right, anybody else want to make comment on this proposal? If not, I'll close public comment, bring it back to the applicants. Board members, questions of the applicant? Do you guys want to address some of the things you've heard? What, how do we want to proceed?
We own three other facilities up here. I'm very open to these people's comments and thoughts and accept a lot of them, but there's also a few things. Traffic count, I think, would be less with this storage facility by a long shot compared to somebody coming there and putting a residential neighborhood with eighty houses or, I'm not, you know, I didn't look at it from a residential end. We do all downward lighting. We have one on Salem Road called Secure Space Storage, which is right on the county line, too, between Fayetteville, you know, right past the school there. And at first, the neighbors, you know, they fought it for sure. But I mean, I think most of them now have accepted it, and we do great landscaping. Maintenance was brought up once or twice. We maintain them well. It's gonna be, you know, concrete roads. We make the appearance on the front for sure nice, and, you know, all that would be the next stage to me. So I mean, we're just asking for the vote here tonight, so that's my comment.
All right, comments, questions from board members for applicants?
One question, and I don't know if this is in order or not, but would you entertain offers to sell the land to, there's so many people objecting that they could buy it from you?
He's not the landowner. He's the developer.
He is under contract so far.
You're the landowner, right?
I will be the buyer, so yeah.
Property is under contract, subject to approval of this.
We would entertain that. I mean, it's, you know, we're open.
Okay, other questions of the applicant? Okay, appreciate it. Thank you. Bring it back to the board.
I'll take this one, Anthony. You know, everybody has competing interests here, and, you know, I, for one, I'm a firm believer in people doing what they want with their own property. Its best use could be whatever the owner feels its best use is. So I'm gonna recommend we approve the CUP process at this point and move on to LSD.
Second. We have a motion in second. Call for the vote. Let's do a roll call on this one.
Sure. Anthony McNutt?
Yes.
Jay Piercy?
Yes.
Joe Manord?
Yes.
Bob is out, and Marla is out, so I'm gonna say Chantel Perrier.
No.
And Lauren Sheckelford.
No.
So that fails three to two, so. The applicant can appeal the process to the quorum court. Like, reach out and we can provide you with all the information. As of now, you have thirty days to appeal the process. Otherwise, it's like basically dead. Thank you, guys.
They can appeal, so, all right. So the application for the conditional use permit failed on a vote of three to two. The applicant can appeal to the circuit court, I'm sorry, is that right?
Quorum court.
Quorum court. Can appeal to the quorum court. They have thirty days to do so. Appreciate everybody. Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
All right, we're gonna take a two-minute recess to let this clear out.
Just make sure, make sure like you write down your names, please.